All right, we're gonna start the meeting if everyone can take their seats. Hang on. It is 6:31. Gonna call the meeting to order, Killington Select Board for Monday, September 22nd, at 6:30. The first item is gonna be to approve the agenda, and then we're gonna kinda talk. Oops, I moved. Uh, can I get a second?
Yes.
All right. We're coming online to you people. Yeah. Can you make sure that you can hear us online? It looks like our video's not quite there yet, but we're working on that. Can you hear us at least?
Paulie's gonna pick her up.
Oh, okay. Paulie says yes. Thank you, Paulie.
I don't know why ours isn't.
Yeah. All right, if you can just play around. Uh, we'll try and get you video. It shows that we have it, but we don't know why it's not working. All right. So, approval of minutes.
Well, approval of the agenda.
Of the agenda, sorry. Approval of the agenda. Is there anything that needs to be added, removed, moved?
I don't think there should be anything added, but I need citizens' comments and concerns. I would like, before anyone else speaks in the audience, citizens or whatever, that I have a chance to move over to the microphone as a citizen instead of a select board member.
Yep. That'll be part, and also make sure to get you there. We also have another visitor. We have Mr. Lyle Johnson, that's gonna speak after that. And then we'll also open it. So, anything else? Any other items? Nope? All right. All in favor of the move, the agenda as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our first item is, we wrote down a moment of silence. Obviously, probably everyone in this room knows, I don't think it's a shock to anyone, we lost our town manager last week. Sorry. The, uh, the impact Dave made was pretty big. It was short. We needed him for longer, but the, uh, the town, the people, the people in the office, Mona, Linda, Kirsten, like, brand new, still in the first month, they're stepping up. They're doing big. Their directors, like Lisa, she's taking on more. Brian doing the water, Will helping out. Even down to Griffin over at the rep. He said, "What can I do?" He said, "I know it's not part of your job, but we have some boxes that need to be moved. Can you do it?" And he said, "Yeah, absolutely." So, I want everyone in public to know that the town and their employees, they're stepping up big. And thank you to you guys. And thank you to everyone's been making it going. I don't wanna do a moment of silence, 'cause Dave really liked music, so I'm gonna do a moment of Zeppelin. I think he would appreciate it much more.
Very much.
All right. Thank you. And sorry to pay TV for your YouTube copyright strike that will be coming in on that. Um, so, we're gonna keep going on, and we're gonna get on with our meeting, and we have a lot of items, so we're gonna try and move through some of them, then administrate them quickly, but there's still time for public comment, there's time for all that. It may limit some of it, 'cause again, we have a lot. So, please don't take personal offense if I ask you to wrap it up quickly, or can you bring it to another meeting? Thank you, guys. All right. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th.
Can I get them?
Second.
Thank you. I gotta pull them up. All right. As I'm pulling it up, the, they're of September 9th. Is that correct, the first one?
I believe there's only one.
There's only one? All right. Does anyone have it? Any issues or changes or alterations?
Just to make a point that when somebody in the public speaks, they really gotta say their name as a number six. Unnamed library representative, I don't know if it was the librarian, or I don't know if it was one of the board members that spoke on reading this. So, yeah, just to make a point, please really say your name, so it's picked up, and it could be put into, instead of saying unnamed.
Yes, thank you.
I think that was Jane, actually, because she's the woman that handed out the paper that took it easy. So, if you think that's what it was, and we...
Do you wanna make a statement?
I believe I could be wrong, but I think it was.
Let's put Jane in there.
Like what I said in the beginning. Please just say your name clearly, so it can be put in clearly.
I think other, I don't see anything to add or alter, if anyone else has a, or just wanted to add. There, Jim? All right, so, all in favor to accept the select board meeting minutes as, you know, as altered with that one addition? Say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Nope? All right. That's our only approval of the minutes. Next one's gonna be citizens' concern. Jim, you on it?
Yeah. My name is Jim Half. As a citizen, I'm gonna be putting a letter into the Mountain Times this week. Town of Killington needs to put aside personal politics and build a strong working team. Dear editor, my name is Jim Half, and I'm a select board member of Killington. It's my 10th year on the board in total, with two more to serve in this term, and I've been an active resident and business owner in the community for almost 30 years. It is with great displeasure that I have to say that I'm very concerned about the direction of this town. Not just specific things, but the approach some of the leaders have taken over the past six months. Instead of build a team where different perspectives were appreciated and specialized skills recognized and used for the benefit of the town, its residents and business owners, those with the greatest institutional knowledge have been fired or pushed out, almost it seems purposely, to concentrate control and the narrative, believing assumably that they alone can know and do it all better than anyone else, better even than a team. Unfortunately now, only those that get along with the small in-crowd at Town Hall seem to remain. This puts the town in a very precarious place, not only for the taxpayers, but also for the current and future employees, afraid of being ostracized and then inevitably fired if they dared do to disagree with the leadership. Now, I know that many of you have criticized me for doing the same thing, but I simply must correct the record on that. When we got the TIF and held a massive ribbon-cutting with dozens of people from here, people here from all over the state, there were at least 20 people and organizations that I named and thanked for their role in helping our town get this important designation. It was always a team effort. We put together a dynamic team, and we worked together for the sole benefit of the town. No one was in it for him or herself. Unfortunately, that team has also been dismantled over the past few months. The assumed powers concentrated, and now none of those people who had the concentration are here anymore. Now, to get into my specific concerns facing the town that demands the board's immediate corrective action as a citizen. First, the Highway Department. I'm very concerned about our lack of qualified snowplowers as the winter season approaches. We need at least six CDL drivers, and after Bob was fired last week, we now only have two, I believe. So, the town really needs to get moving on filling these positions. One way would be for this board to approve a motion to bring back Bob. We're simply not in the position to lose any more drivers at this point, and I think that the department is going to have its hands full trying to fill the vacancy as is. Hopefully, it's not the plan to hire one local company to plow this winter, rather than properly staff up the town crew. I'm not sure how legal, how a legal contract could be awarded for such work, as it would surely be well over the town manager's spending limit. There is rumor that there is conversation going on about one, and I would think that it would be put out for a bid, so all could, um, bid for it. Second, the Fire Department. I know there's been some turnover and attrition at the Fire Department, but we must fully staff this department. That's six full-time firefighters plus a chief, which the vote is approved in budgets. I believe the right way to do this is to empower the chief to do this. Let him or her hire as he or she sees fit. The town manager and board should not get involved with those personal matters. We need to stay in our lane, trust our department heads, unless the board has brought information from the town manager that requires their involvement. Third, TIF and FEMA. We lost a big asset with Abby Sherman. We simply must rehire a Director of Public Works to oversee the massive infrastructure projects, work with FEMA, and oversee the Highway Department, and we must designate a knowledgeable, consistent person to help us through TIF. We cannot leave TIF up to people who do not understand it. It's too complex and important to assume, as we as a board know enough, or even that a new Public Works Director or Town Manager could sufficiently get up to speed with all their daily responsibilities to learn. Last, zoning. The zoning administrative position needs to be full-time, especially after asking for a 1B and a 1A designation, and with new subdivision regulations proposed by the Planning Commission/Town Planner in the works. I'm not going to hold this position forever, guys. Maybe even not that much longer, but I will continue to advocate for this job being full-time. It's simply what's needed, and you're doing a disservice to the public by not fully staffing this important work. Once again, it's not about me, it's about moving this town forward. It is not about the new Finance Director or anybody else here. We need to be a team, and this was a team before certain things. That's it. I'm not taking any questions on it.
All right, thank you, Jim. Great comments. I agree with all your points on there. You have a lot of great stuff. Do you have any comment as a select board member after that? No?
I have nothing. You're on.
Okay. Cool. Thank you for that. Lyle, if you would like to introduce and...
I'll be up there.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then we'll open it up to everyone.
I'm Lyle Johnson. I don't know if I've met everybody yet. Um, there's some new members here on the board. I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber in Economic Development down in Rutland, and would like to thank you for being members of our organization. Also, I wanted to thank you for the fact that you are one of the groups, one of the towns, that were the first in on our regional marketing initiative. You have helped fund that program with our goal of bringing more people here that will be able to fill positions, some of which maybe you're gonna be talking about in the near future. This is a tough time. Dave would love that, by the way, Patrick. Ask his wife about how many CDs he has in the basement, and she'll tell you that he had it counted and categorized, the whole deal. Because it's a difficult time, we are more than willing to help in any way that we can. Primarily, we have been, the role we have played is connecting the dots. When Dave, who I've worked with for a very long time, needed to be introduced to someone or needed to know where to find information, we're not the keepers of information, but we know people who have that information, and so we would like to be helpful moving forward in any way that we can. We're working currently with Lisa Davis. Shasta Matino is our Finance and Compliance Manager, and Shasta's working on the Catalyst Grant and is supporting Lisa through that process. We're a very thin layer of administration for that $3 million grant, which, by the way, towns don't normally get. You got that because of the positive steps that are taking, that you are taking right now and have taken in the past. So, we're available to help Lisa. Also, I wanted to just rewind the tape just a little bit. I know you know this information, but this whole TIF thing, which is amazing for the town, it is something that you only get two of in a county. You got one, you got the first one, and then Rutland said, "How do we follow that?" And then Rutland got theirs, and now I wish you all could vote on October 7th, because they're voting for their bond, which will kinda move things forward. So, if you'd like to move really quick and come down and vote, that would be great. But, the purpose of the TIF, as you know, is to take, move forward that project that people have been talking about for 40 years, and you're gonna do that. And you're gonna do that in very planful ways. But, to rewind the tape just a little bit, about four years ago, we didn't have much involvement with the TIF or anything that was going on up here, other than regional marketing. About four years ago, Jim Half walked in delivering papers, and it said, "We've gotta get water to the top of the mountain. How are we gonna do that? I wish we could qualify for a TIF." I said, "Well, maybe you do. Let's call the person that's in charge of that." So, we called and found out that Killington does qualify and did qualify for the TIF, and that got the ball rolling. And since then, it's been a lot of effort by a lot of different people. So, you've got people that have historical knowledge, Jim being one of them, Lisa Davis being another. We're willing to help in any way we can. Just let us know. We're at your disposal, you're members of our organization. We'll do what we can based on what we know.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Lyle.
That was my speech.
That was great.
Thank you.
We very much appreciate you guys on there. It's nice meeting you the other day. Yeah. I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the room. Again, we'll have time later on, and, go ahead, Sal. If you can, just when you come up here, make sure to say your name.
Yeah. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Do I get a push?
Can you hear me?
Hi.
You good?
Robert Salmieri, owner of Killington Mall. Since we're talking about the water system, I've been pretty much here for all the meetings for this water system, and the Killington Mall has signed up to be hooked up in two Somewhere along the line, the nipples for us got relocated by someone, and we brought it to the, Dave and Abby about getting it back put where they belong, just 'cause of too much stuff underneath that parking lot. This has been going on since May, and we did come to a conclusion at several meetings. Jim was at one, you were at one also, and so wasn't Dave. Abby was. That, the town agreed that they would not charge me for moving the nipples back to where they need to go, but I asked for it to be put in writing, and now with days falling, shall we say, it's more important now than ever to get this put down in writing, that both those nipples will be put where they were originally planned, at no cost for me, 'cause right now I don't have a hookup, and I'm not gonna hook up. I'm gonna hire a lawyer if I have to, 'cause I'm not paying to hook up or remove these nipples and put them where they belong.
Can I stop you for a second, Sal?
Yes.
To get you guys up to speed here, we had multiple meetings with the Frains Group and VHB, and we brought in all the people in the first phase that were going to be hooking up. They all worked, or whoever worked with the Frains, to say where they wanted the water to be for their nipple, as Sal calls it, for their connection, was given to, and I know Sal was here at the meetings and gave it to them. Somehow, it didn't hit the drawing. So, I don't think this is a question of not charging him. I think this is a question of just putting the nipples where they were originally said to, in the plans that he gave some year ago. And if he wants it in writing, what I just said now should make the minutes at the next board meeting, so it don't hold. To me, I was there at the meetings. I haven't been to meetings since, as I read, it's coming to late May. So, anybody else?
I'll concur to that. I know I was in some conversations with Dave, and he let me know that they had re, basically, the original place that their place was not working, and he sat at a place with you, and you were in agreement with what it was, and it was all getting recorded, just like Jim was saying, so...
Right. 'Cause they're all staked out.
You'll make sure it stays right.
Yeah, they're all staked out. They've been staked from the beginning.
And they're still staked, right?
Yep.
Yeah, it's just in the drawings or wherever it's not?
Right.
Right.
Nothing's in the drawings.
Does Lisa O'Brien need to do a change order with the Frains to get them moved?
Uh, we can check with them.
I would say no.
Yeah.
No?
It should be...
Because Sal already went through all the stuff with the Frains to... What I'm just saying, we need to drive the plant.
Yeah, a change order might have been the wrong thing. A work order.
Well, we need to verify that they are...
Yeah.
That they're aware, and they don't put it in, and then have to redo the work.
Well, they already put it in.
Oh, they already put it in.
They put the, they put it in in the wrong area, which would, if you go and you're coming down the Killington Road, and if you look at the old Killington law, as I call the Outback Futuria...
Yeah, yeah.
The highest point of the drop is where they put it, instead of by the driveway, where Sal asked for.
Yeah.
So, it really should be in writing to Sal, but also a work order.
Yeah.
Okay, to get the work done.
The work order was already in.
But, as Dave said, they already paid the company to move it, but then never put it in writing, so the construction company was working out of my parking lot.
Yeah.
I met with them all there, and they supposedly were already paid for it, were aware of it, and then they were told not to do it, is what they told me.
We'll make sure that gets corrected, 'cause that's, that was not my understanding. I don't think that was your understanding.
No. And I wanna make sure that not everybody's gonna be able to come up here and say what Sal's saying, because not everybody did what Sal did. There are people that did not respond.
Yeah.
And I do have all the paperwork that...
The Frains put out a plan of saying, "This is where we're putting the connections for you. If you want it somewhere else, tell us." There are certain few groups that did, there's many that didn't.
No, it's not.
I want that in the record, too.
That's good. That's very important to put in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
I gotta call it early night tonight, guys, for medical reasons, but I am gonna go home and go get my...
I think you've done.
Have a good one, Sal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sal.
Thanks. All right. Anyone else from, for public comment? All right, anyone online? Okay?
Patrick, how about the... I'll just say something. Sure, George. What are we gonna do with the plowing situation here? It's something we're gonna...
It's coming up in the meeting right now, or...
It is not coming up in the meeting, but it's gonna come up in executive session with staff.
Okay, because, you know, it could snow next week.
Oh, we're very aware. Ricky and I have talked about this.
If you have two people, it's not gonna work out too well.
We're gonna talk about it later. This is a, an issue that we're very aware of.
Because I tried to put it to you guys' attention earlier, George, you were putting too much on top of Dave.
I'm gonna stop you right now, though, 'cause we're gonna address that. We're gonna talk about it.
Okay, I'm in a different situation now.
Okay, what else would you like to talk about?
While I was saying that you put too much, like Jim was saying, you put so much on Dave. Now, Dave's not here, unfortunately, God bless him, but you can't do it that way. You have to have a manager that runs as a manager, that runs a team. You can't have the manager be the team.
Right.
So, what you're doing in the future, please take that in consideration, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. But, we're gonna, we're gonna work on all that later with how we're gonna move forward, what positions we're gonna staff up, what we're gonna put out, so there's gonna be a lot of that happening, 'cause Jim's absolutely right with that. There's, there's stuff that we need to do, and if anyone, you know, if Dave could've handled it all or not, we don't know, but we're in a different situation now, and you're absolutely...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a good procedure to go through, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
You know, in the future, if we hire someone, make sure that they're gonna manage everyone, and that they have the knowledge also to do it themselves, outside of that way.
Thank you very much, George.
You're welcome.
All right, going down to review estimate water contract four, separate from road, Phase A. So, this is, thank you. This is, right now, the contract four is the water main that runs in line with road, Phase 1A. This is up East Mountain Road, and the original plan, for everyone to be aware, the original plan, correct me if I'm wrong, was to lower the road, and then once the road is lowered, well, at the same time it's lowered, put in the water main. Right now, the road lowering has been put on pause, partly because of Act 250, and so now we have to change our plans. And the options are, we either push forward with the current road dig deep and lay the pipe, you know, 20 feet below level, or wherever the grade is, and then, and this would be starting in the fall and clearing, and then doing it in the spring would be the actual work. And then, when it's time to do the road, we just bring the road down to meet the pipe. The other option is we delay the water main, and we do it all at the same time. Right now, the potential cost impact is, the first one is 700, and this is a quote, is the increase to the base project. It's gonna be $725,000. If we waited, potentially, it would be 600, but we can't get a firm, uh, quote, because there's a lot of unknowns, and the, the company is a...
S U R.
S U R. Thank you. S U R. They're not even sure what their scheduling is like when we're talking. So, the good thing is that the S R F can cover most of this change, and depending on which, 'cause we originally, when we applied, it was for $10 million. It came in way under about $8 million, and so we have some space that we should be able to get any change approved and reimbursed. And also, there is, depending on which bucket it comes out, bucket of money it comes out of would dictate how much is refunded. So, it could be nearly all of it, or it could be about 50% of it. The advice from Stephanie Clark, from VHB, from all the people working on this, is to keep going forward with it and go with the 7, that 725,000 change order, because we know that, and again, most of this should be forgiven. That is what I'm bringing, that's a recommendation of everyone else. Waiting is 125,000 cheaper, but again, that's not really the true bottom line that the town would be paying. Do you have more, like, kind of history on it?
I, I would love to hear what the other guys have to say before I speak.
But, do you have any history on it, though?
I have a lot of history, but I've been kicked out, and this is one of the biggest things.
Jim, I'm trying to build bridges here.
Yeah.
You have knowledge.
Yeah.
Can you share it with the group?
Yeah, so, basically, really, contract four is from East Mountain Road, where the water line goes up all the way down to Ravine Road. Okay? So, for the water line to be put in, we're not waiting for Act 250 on that, because we've already started putting the water line in the majority of the road. This area here is from, in front of the Mountain Inn slash Distillery to about the end of Mountain Green.
Yeah.
That is the only, it's about 700 feet of road that needs to be taken down to that level because of the parking in the village going up there. The plan was, we've already started it, I mean, to say that we can't move forward with it, then this line is somewhere around 7,000 lineal feet, I believe, maybe 12,000. It's been a while since I looked at it, guys, but 7,000 to 12,000 lineal feet of water line. So, to say that we can't do this now because of Act 250, we're talking 700 feet. So, the other issue is, is that what we were talking about is, at the time, we didn't have an easement from Great Gulf and the resort, so we didn't know what the level was gonna be of the road going down. There was some talk of 20 feet down, 18 feet down, 24 feet down. We were gonna say, just put the water line in at 4 feet if we couldn't move through with getting the easements from the developer, but we have gotten the easements from the developer, and we have gotten whatever. Saying that this is going to cost us $725,000 or $600,000, I'm sorry, guys, but just once again, it just proves that people voted on something that we were very transparent on the previous board. This is not costing anything. This is in the TIF, and the developer pays 100% and is guaranteed it. So, back when we didn't have the easement, we were threatening lightly to get the easement, which was many... which was many executive sessions that a lot of people here complained that Chris and I were in, where we were working for the town, okay? And we were saying, we're gonna put it in at four feet until you give us the easement. If you don't give us the easement, it's in the four feet, we're moving forward the water line. If you decide later that you're really gonna come in, then you're gonna have to pay, and we can do a temporary loop around that seven hundred feet to keep water going to everybody. All right, so now that it looks like to me that this is on our side, okay, that we follow Stephanie Clark, who was, while sitting here, was part of the team, and I want to also say my thing here. I did, Lisa Davis Lewis is still with us.
Yeah.
And she was a huge part of the team, okay? But I would say, we automatically, right now, say, we need water down the Killington Road. If we don't have it in this seven hundred feet, that's a disconnection.
Yep.
We move forward with the seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to go to two, go to twenty feet. It's gonna end up.
It's gonna be minimal.
Probably saving later on the roadside, because we're gonna already be blasting through to get down that twenty feet. Craig, put you on the spot here.
No.
I will, I will. But if we're gonna put in an eight-inch ductile line, it's not just gonna be going a foot. They're gonna have to blast probably a good ten feet out or whatever to get working into that hole. So that will be getting that base down to that area, which will take money away from when the road group comes in. So I would just make sure that, I'm gonna make a motion right now that we do the deep water main. We do it right away, and just hope you guys understand, like, don't be scared of this TIF. Great Gulf has to pay, and the, and if you read the agreement, it states, I believe, twenty-seven, twenty-eight is when they start coming on the hook. That's my motion, go to one deep water main.
Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion from other members, questions?
Well, I, I did have some conversations with Lisa prior to this, okay, and, um, yeah. My, my concern is if we don't go with the option one, okay, we do change the pace of the whole water program along the Killington Road. And that's very dangerous, okay, and, and we need to keep that pace going, because people understand the water is becoming necessary. Okay, yeah.
I was in Stove Depot yesterday, Saturday. They haven't had water in two weeks.
Yeah, I, I, I do think, I do think Jim, Jim makes an interesting point about the cost.
Yeah.
Okay, but, but I think Lisa was presenting it this way, because it's a change in the costs that have already been bid up, okay? So, I mean, she, she's, she's doing her due diligence and saying, hey, they originally put out bids, okay, and this is an increase over the, the bids that they put out, so. But in my conversations with her, it appeared that basically all of this stuff would be covered.
Yeah.
So, um, so again, I would support going with option number one.
And it's still below what the original.
Yeah.
Two million dollars was the lower.
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, depending how long you do it, that six hundred thousand dollars could go.
Could be nothing, yeah, the six hundred dollars could, could evaporate and could, could go crazy.
You have so many businesses up. That's another thing I don't know if this group understands. We have P F A S in the area. Sal's been to the meetings. Um, Chris Carr has been to the meetings, Chris Bianchi for K M S. The state of Vermont folks are looking to make that there will be no wells to be drilled in this area for future development, without testing. They also want sales of houses to test their water before they're sold, and they're looking for the smoking gun. And if you're found to be the one with P F A S, you could be liable for millions of dollars.
Yeah.
This is why the previous board and Steve Fineran was part of it, a big part of this. Why we moved this forward, and why one day, as a newspaper delivery boy for the Mountain Times during COVID, I got to meet Lyle Jepson and start throwing in an idea. So I, I, I think, I'd like to, unless anyone else has questions on this, I, I think it's a no-brainer. We need water. We need to move through.
Did Lyle say, did he say he's having a good?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that we attend the water contract meetings, and there are some delays you can control, and some you can't.
This one you can.
This one you can, so take control of it.
Yeah.
I don't know if you want to go to the public.
Yeah. Um, so, do you wanna call?
I called a question, unless you wanna go to the public, that's how you have it.
Anyone else from the public? To comment? Yep. I'd like to comment, please. Yep. Mark Dinges.
What I'm hearing and feeling in this room, going through the last four meetings, I think without Jim Happ, we wouldn't even have water coming into Killington Hall. I really wanna know why he was removed last May from this whole picture. I called him up, I asked some questions, and he tells me he was removed from it. He doesn't know what's going on. And it's absurd to me that he was removed when I think he's the only one in this room that really knows what's truly going on with this whole project.
Lisa Davis Lewis and Stephanie Clark is part of the team, and Lyle Jepson is a part of the team. He's continuing to go to the meetings.
Thank you for the comment.
And also, back to Sal's point, beside Sal's property, Fall Line, Whipple Tree, High Ridge, all their taps are in the wrong locations also. They tore through, I live at High Ridge, they tore through our well lines today. We lost water all day long. Who from this town is doing the engineering and watching what work is going on? There is no engineer for the town, but there is currently, and I'm sorry, I used to drive the road three times a day looking over. I dealt with West, I dealt with Markowski, I dealt with Casella on the different projects. You're questioning, why I had so many hours? I think maybe you're gonna find out, but no one right now is driving around looking at this. DeFrane's is hired on, and there is supposed to be somebody that should be there overseeing the work being done. That being said, Trail Creek has said they do not want to hook up on the water line, so that is one of the ones that I was mentioning to, with Sal. I know they for fact did not want to hook into the water line, so it doesn't matter if it's in the wrong spots.
Well, today they don't, but in the future.
But they had the chance to come in and say they want it here, and if people can't plan for the future, that's their problem. They should have said, I want it here, I'm not hooking up today. We can't be moving things away. There was a plan that was kicked out. It laid out where they felt the frames, that the water lines, that, that the things are supposed to be.
Can they throw a T collar on? I thought that was the whole idea, is that's how you tap into the mains. You throw a T collar on and then.
They put the T in, if you wanna call it a T, okay?
Is the T the nipple the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But they're being put in the wrong locations, though.
But they were, they were put in, in a plan, and the people with the companies, these people with these properties were supposed to get a hold of DeFrane's.
Okay.
They had multiple meetings, and they could have went, Sal showed up.
Okay, we will check on that.
And that showed up.
If that's a larger issue, it's just Sal's.
Everyone else showed up. Whoever showed up said where they wanted them, why some of them didn't get there, I don't know.
All right.
But thanks for the comments, anyone.
No, Patrick, I appreciate you shaking, I appreciate you shaking Jim's hand, and I really think he needs to be put back in that position he had prior to that. He has more knowledge, not to put anybody down about this tip from day one, because without him, we wouldn't have it. He needs to be put back in this position if he wants it, because he's gonna help and benefit the whole Killington area.
It's a team.
Thank you. All right.
And I brought Dave in.
Yeah, I know.
And he was part of the team.
Yes, he was.
And something happened.
Yep, I got you. Go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew, get them. Anytime. If you find an hour or so, please come and visit me, and I'll show you everything I received under Freedom of Information about Jim and possible other things.
Andrew, just.
I'm not bringing you up to speed, so you have the other side of the story.
Just for time, I'm gonna, I'll let you talk.
It's okay, I just wanted to throw it out there.
All right, thank you.
Some people just don't know, but there is another side of the story.
Do we have any other citizen comments? Oh, no, we're sorry, forgot to cross off.
So, calling for shit. Patrick, I did have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um.
About the water, sorry, wrong water.
Yeah, well, they're doing East Mountain Road.
Yeah.
And the parts they seem to be finished, look to me like they're, that's gonna heap the shit out of it, you know what I mean? I can't say it any other way. It doesn't look right. It's horrible. No, it just doesn't. I mean, I drive, you know, going to the golf course all the time, and it just doesn't look right. I don't know how it's gonna work out in the winter. Maybe that's something that, you know, your team should look at.
Yeah.
This is something else that you need to go in and see what the contract calls for. The people from Trail Creek visited me three weeks ago, um, the person that's in charge of maintenance there, and one of the board members. One of the board members, and they are completely right that when you put down a pipe, and there's like two feet of stone, it's supposed to be compacted. I have an email that I forwarded, because once again, people come in to me. And I said, I'm no longer on this. I forwarded to Dave three weeks ago. Don't know if he got back. I'll forward you the email.
Yeah, please forward.
I'll forward it to you, but what they watched was two feet of stone being compacted, maybe another foot of fill being put in, that compacted, and their exact words were, no. Then they came in and dumped another three feet with no compaction, taking a front loader to scrape down to the road to get it off, and then put.
An excavator bucket.
Pa- pavement down. I think Will.
That's exactly what you're doing.
I think Will has been involved, and we'll say that there's conversation going back and forth between the engineers and Mark, and, and S U R West, saying that they plan on going back in later to do a test next year. I don't think that's the way the contract's written up.
So we gotta check that.
Yeah, I gotta sit there and say.
Your compaction test and the contract, you know?
It's gonna have to, I'm, I'm pretty sure there was, that, you know, they were supposed, that pavement that they're putting down for S U R is always supposed to be of a temporary pavement cover, until we redo the road. They aren't gonna be doing the road the right way, S U R.
I don't think you can plow it the way it is now. You're gonna go and break a plow.
You're gonna, it's gonna cost us, and it's like, and, 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 and the gentleman from Trail Creek that came in, not the, um, worker, okay, but somebody from the board, this is what he did for a living, and he's like.
The one from, sorry, the, the citizen, or resident.
Yeah, the resident.
Yeah.
That did this for a living overseeing, and he's like, it'll cost three million dollars to dig everything else up along that line and then compact it down correctly.
I thought that's why you have an engineer on the job, to watch that stuff, to make sure the stuff is done properly. They should be doing that, and someone is, I think, dropping the ball.
Well, the engineer is, and then we're supposed to have somebody that was supposed to be coming back to us.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna go back to the cobblestones, okay? I'm the one that picked it up. And I'm gonna bring up, like, what Ricky is saying here, I received an email the other day from Rosie O'Brien, from V H B, saying that, and I watched, I saw Corcoran Constant, that's not their fault, it's, Markowski's the, the one that won the bid.
Yep.
They're the subcontractor of the subcontractor.
Yep.
Saying that they were going in and removing each one of the cobblestones that were not even, or sunken, or raised, or whatever. No, the contract stated that every cobblestone shall have five inches of that polymer sand. Going in there now and just picking out the ones that were moved.
Yep.
And then waiting another two, three years when all of a sudden we're done, and the other ones start popping. Every one of them need to be removed, and every single one of them need to be put to five inches. So that's an example of the engineering firm that we hired on to oversee the project was not going in there and making sure that they put five inches down.
Is that the same firm? Do we know?
V H B.
Yeah, I'm saying it's, it would be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if it's the same firm as the water up above.
Oh, that's what I meant.
I think DeFrane's is the one that's supposed to be doing the water.
Okay.
We would be probably wise to have a competent contractor works.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jim, what's the solution that we're gonna get by the winter on that?
I'm gonna refer back to Ricky. I mean, he, I mean, it's supposed to be.
Minimal, and he's, I mean, it's getting late now. Minimal, shim it or something, so you can at least plow it, because you're going to end up working a plow off a truck or something, if, or a wing.
Yeah.
Cause it's a dangerous road to drive anyway.
I drove down through there with a truck and trailer and.
You have to stay out in the middle lane.
Yeah, I've been driving it for, it's horrible, the last two months, but back away, Jim. Jim, back away.
All right, cool. Well, we'll check on that, we'll do that.
Hi. So, can I ask a question? Are we still in that phase? Or did I miss it?
We're still in the wa, we're talking about water. It's about the water line.
I wanted to talk about the road just for a second.
Uh, it's, it's in the same spot?
Since, yeah.
If it's the same spot, yeah, cause they're two.
I thi, I think it's the same spot.
East Mountain Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, actually, no, the, the main road, Killington Road.
Oh.
That's where the cobblestones are, right?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm trying to say in time here, you brought up a fact, or whatever, whatever. Right now, it's kind of moved away from dirt and grass to fixing the cobblestones the right way, but instead, somehow, for some reason, what they're doing is just picking out the one that moved, not the whole thing.
Yeah, but here's the thing, approximately two months ago, you can look it up in the meeting minutes, when Abby was still here, we were talking about, well, what's gonna happen? And she was saying, well, I'm looking into it. I think she said she was, and maybe someone else. And I made the comment that said, with all due respect, doing a great job, but I think with something this large in scope and dollars involved, we need somebody with more clout than just Abby. And I said, aren't we represented by a, a lawyer in the town that could take this on? Do you remember that?
Yeah, I'm gonna say that, because we're, we're not talking about that, and we have, we do have a lot.
All right.
Um, it still works.
That's fine.
If it's not done, because right now, the way we move forward with it was do it to the contract, and if it's still not done to the contract, that's always an option.
Okay. Shower tiles, they only take six of them out and replace them, you want the whole shower done the right way.
All right, so we have a vote of just, we support, I mean, the motion basically to support moving forward with the number one option.
Not support.
Just motion to do it.
With one.
So all in favor of going with option one, say aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Yes. All right, next up, we have some, uh, we've assigned three resolutions for replacing authorized representatives, uh, which would be Dave's signature on things.
So I'm gonna read off the first one.
Go ahead.
Before I read it off, I'd like to welcome Kirsten Hathaway. I think she's here.
Which.
Nice to meet you.
I'm just.
Jim, you going in order?
I, I've got this one here.
Okay, yep.
I'm gonna make, I make a motion for Water Infrastructure Financing Program, Appointment of Alternative Authorized Representative. Um, the Killington Select Board is the legislative hereby authorized. I'm gonna say the Select Board Chair, don't take it badly.
No, no, please do.
And the Finance Director, okay?
So, can we?
To act as an alternate authorized representative, the applicant for the purpose of furnishing the state of Vermont such information data, and this is in reference to the Water Infrastructure Financing Program.
Excellent. So can I get a second to change up those people that have signed?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And I'm gonna pass this one around. All right, next one you're doing.
And there is the.
This was not signed at the last one, but they approved.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's the resolution, Town of Killington, a resolution authorizing the Select Board Chair empowered to act on behalf of the Town of Killington as the authorized official. Whereas the Town of Killington has obtained a three million dollar catalyst grant from the Northern Board as Regional Commission. So I am making a motion of approving the resolution of the Town of Killington Select Board to authorize the Select Board Chair to be the signature. And I'm, I'm, I'm making the motion for Bill Barnes as the Vice Chair to sign.
So can I get a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Same one with, for Kirsten.
Now I'm moving on to a resolution for the Town of Killington Select Board, whereas a resolution authorizing that the Finance Director is empowered to act on behalf of Town of Killington as the authorized official, once again, for the three million dollar catalyst grant, and authorizing Patrick Cushing as the Chair of the Killington Select Board to sign.
All in favor?
Aye. And I just wanna make sure that the Finance Director and the Chair understand, even when we make motions for the Town Clerk to move forward with liquor licenses, we don't say a name.
Yeah.
So we're not here every two years.
That is the better way to do it. All right, so all in, all in favor of that? Say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Got it.
Maybe one more.
But there's no paper.
So there's no paper. So this needed recorded in the meeting minutes. Okay, so the, the last one would be. Okay, so the, the last one would be to set the authorized representatives uh, to sign for FEMA to be the Select Board Chair, as well as the Director of Finance. That's what's being asked. Can I get a, uh, motion? Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, and that's, so we took care of all the FEMA ones. Or, I'm sorry, the FEMA one, which is not something we need to sign. All right. Discussion, set date for fall bulky trash day. Jake, leave it up to you.
Uh, so typically, it was usually the first week in November. As last year, I normally take vacation that week. So I will give you the option of doing it a week earlier, which will entail the bulky days being simply Saturday and Monday, as opposed to being the first week in November, it'll be in Saturday, half day Sunday and Monday. So I'll give you the option of doing it a week early or doing it without me.
But can we do it a week later?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Can we do it a week later?
We can. I just.
We'd stick with the Saturday, Sunday and Monday.
Yeah.
Well, last year we did it two days and nobody seemed to have a problem, so.
Okay, we're asking questions.
Well, I think we're, I'm just saying we say we can save, um, some overtime there for the Sunday and.
Okay, just do Saturday, Monday.
What are the dates?
Do you wanna do?
It would be.
Do you wanna do the week after or do you wanna do the week before? Which would work better for you?
Well, if we do the week after, it would be three days because we'd be in.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't have to be three days. We could do it the week after and.
That would cause confusion.
Would cause confusion.
I think so.
The 25th and 27th is the last day of October.
Yes.
25th is Saturday.
Yeah, so it would be the 25th of October and the 27th of October.
Make a motion for October 25th and October 27th for bulky.
Can I get a second? Second. All right, all in favor?
Conversation.
Oh, conversation, yes, all right. Conversation, any input?
Bulky trash days is not your angle of garbage.
Yeah. This is for big things?
So things that are, are not taken, as we do not take electronics. We do not take construction debris on that anytime, including bulky weekend. We take no hazardous waste that weekend as normal. Um, so it's, you know, bulky stuff, dressers, mattresses.
And paint cans are not that either. Okay.
Non-hazardous waste.
Paint cans, if they dry it out, you throw them in the regular garbage.
And if anybody doesn't know, when you go buy a can of paint nowadays, you pay a fee.
Yeah.
For that. You can take paint that's half full. You can take a bag of Sherwin-Williams, Benjamin Moore, Home Depot.
LaBalle.
They have to take it. They sell it, they have to take it back.
Save your taxpayers money.
Yeah.
Yes. And just so you know, um, hazardous waste day would be October 4th from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM at the parking lot of the Town Garage.
Call my question.
Call my question?
25th and the 27th.
All right, all in favor for October 25th, 27th to be bulky days, doing it two days, saving some overtime? Say aye?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Personnel policies, first draft. I really only want to spend, since we're gonna be doing a lot tonight, I want to do like 10 minutes on it. Is that okay with you guys?
Yep.
All right. I think the best way to start is just kind of by digging in.
I just thought out what sick leave is not anywhere in here, even though.
Yeah, I didn't see it either.
I wanna keep it organized, so I wanna kinda start from the beginning and go down. Uh, anyone have comments or changes that need to be in section one, title and authority? No. Section two, persons covered. Section three, employment opportunities, or equal opportunities, equal employment opportunities.
There's no changes there.
I, I know, I'm just.
It's a federal thing.
Yeah. Hey, I'm hitting those just in case. Uh, there is one change I noted in new section, management rights. Uh, we left in, you know, instead of doing all the work ourselves, we, we picked up from local towns. We left in, uh, Stowe Town Charter. So I'd say we remove Stowe.
No, this was, was Michael Ramsey copying it from Stowe Charter.
Yeah. Hey, I'd say we lifted it.
And I, and my argument back then, and my argument is right now, in a personnel policy, it is not to, um, state what people's positions are. The Town Manager's rights, management rights are already in statute.
So you just, uh.
I don't think we should be putting in into a personnel policy what one person's position is when underneath the statute for a Town Manager, it already states all of this. And he's hired for that. So if you guys are gonna work by statute, it's there.
So any other discussions about keeping it in versus removing it or indifferent?
If you talk to any legal lawyer, like I had done too, he's like, "Why would you put in a person's job description in a personal?"
Yeah. Um, I think that's fair enough that if it's in statute.
Do we have any history in terms of why someone chose to put that in?
Uh, my only thought would be.
Power? To re, to, to reinforce somewhere else when it's already in or not understanding what the.
Reinforcement of the same.
Okay.
Not, not understanding.
Stowe having that would be slightly different because they're a charter. So they, they could make little tweaks. Um, we can't tweak anything because we have.
When we do a contract, and I'm sure we'll be doing one hopefully soon with the new Town Manager, it will state that underneath the statute of Vermont.
Statute of Vermont, yeah.
And it says all of these things.
Okay, so what do you think? Then put line through that, strike the whole thing?
Come back. That's just a suggestion now. You wanna only spend 10 minutes. It's a question mark instead of a slash or whatever.
Put a slash with it.
So you guys can take a look at it.
I think that's a great idea though. Uh, any things that came in probationary period? Doing with the, the 180 days? Conduct of employees, section five? I don't think it had anything in there. There's conflict of interest, section six. I did write, um, I did write a comment here saying, "Should we just have one section for ethics and have it point to our code of ethics?"
Conflicts of interest to me and a code of ethics is two totally different things.
I think conflicts of interest is covered under the ethics that we did.
Code of Ethics has its own written up, and this is a policy. And to me, conflicts of interest and.
So you just leave it in to reinforce?
You know, you could leave it up there, refer to the code of ethics like you have it, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, to say, "Refer to the code of ethics" instead of restating the stuff that's already in the code of ethics.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. We'll just double check. Maybe we'll double check that. Uh, hours of service.
Yeah, number one, A.
Yeah.
Nine to 4:30 is only seven and a half hours a day for a Town Employee. You're paying them for 40 hours.
That's gonna, yeah, yeah, same thing.
Nine to 4:30 is seven and a half hours. And the previous one had, there was also 15 minutes in there for lunch or whatever, which I think is ridiculous. And we should have a half hour for lunch. So, you know, it used to be 8:00 AM or 8:30 to whatever.
That's what I'm saying. If you made the adjustment, would you want to bump it to the 8:30 side or would you want to bump it to the 5?
I would say it's 8:30 to 5:00. And then I would say within there, there's a half hour for lunch. That's not paid. Just, so when you get to the road crew, there's 7:00 to 3:30, which is eight and a half hours. And they get 30 minutes paid unpaid for lunch. So they're actually working from 7:00 to 3:30, which is eight and a half hours, right?
Yeah, half an hour lunch.
And a half hour lunch is not paid for, so I'm just saying for the same thing.
Yeah, it should match up.
Should be consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But not 7:00 AM.
Yeah, my one question was.
Not 7:00 AM.
Consistent.
My one question for you guys is, so the things, in my mind, uh, town policy is the baseline that applies to all Town Employees. And any kind of, uh, change to that, like the road crew coming in earlier, uh, or working 10-hour days, that that should kinda be covered in a, um, standard operating procedure for the Highway Department?
It says regular. It doesn't say other. It says regular hours. So you get somewhere later on where it's gonna be saying, like, I know this group had a hard time, not this group, but other people maybe had a hard time with a manager doing their duty, and then saying that, say, a Public Works Director could work from home on a Friday, okay? That would say that, and it says somewhere in here that unless a contract or, um, agreement different with the manager, you know?
Yeah.
Would take place, so, um, you know, the regular hours.
So those, yeah, that was, that was slightly different than my point is, any deviations from the norm, should they be handled in here? Or a separate document?
You don't gotta jump around. It is in here. It goes on to say about highway guys that can be called and.
Yeah, they have call assignments.
Right.
It's later on.
Right, so I'm saying, should that, should all the highway stuff be put together in a highway standard operating procedure so that it's not cloud, it's not clouding up the personnel?
Well, you can do section 7A, hours of service for Town Employees, Office Town Employees. And then you can do 7B, hours of service for Highway, and then split it up that way.
Um, I'm also curious.
That also for, like, doesn't make sense for the Police Department and the Fire Department.
Yeah, I was just gonna bring that up. It's, it's curious that.
It should be handled by SOPs for each department.
The Police Department and Fire Department are not included in this section.
So that's what I'm saying is, on this one, we should just have 8:30 to 5:00 or?
Well, then I'm gonna go to page two. Section two, persons covered, C. Where a conflict exists between this policy, any collective bargaining agreement or individual employment contract, the latter will control. That covers it. So police, what here? Police fall under something separate than us, and that, and that would be in a, that would be an, a, I wouldn't call it a collective bargaining agreement because that's a union, okay?
Right, right.
But.
But that, that's.
It's in, it's in an individual employment contract. And once again, like I had read off, we, we should be not listening to every single citizen's concerns of our Fire Department or a Police Department. We have a chief in both of them. Let them deal with it underneath two.
Again, my, my question though, my question though is, those special cases, let them handle by the department. That's, I'm agreeing with you there.
Yeah.
And so not have them in here so that we, so it can be handled by the department.
No, I still think you need something.
Still wanna have it in here?
So I'm saying for the road crew, regular work hours for the road crew shall be 7:00 AM to 3:00. Maybe adding something in there. Well, then it goes on C for on-call assignments that I wanna hit up next.
Yeah, go ahead.
But that gets into, but on-call assignments, Highway Facility.
Can I say something actually first about the previous one? I don't know how you guys feel, but I've never been a big fan of the four tens because I think it's good having someone in there every day of the week. I mean.
They don't stagger?
No, so, so you get a tree that comes down on a Friday, you're paying someone overtime to come in and remove the tree or something. I mean, and that was my experience when we tried it and that.
If you're doing four tens, they need to be staggered.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, 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 I think we should talk to our remaining three workers first. To see how they feel about it. I know Gerald is on every day. He does not opt because in the summertime, he has to take care of the poolside.
Yeah.
I also knew that the foreman, Kevin Ewart, when a tree went down or whatever on a Friday, then he would get the call and he would come in and cut it down. The foreman is a salary position. Which brings me on to on-call assignments. That Highway and Facility Department employees, including foremen designated to be on-call for an anticipated weather event, shall remain available to be called in. An expected report to the Town Garage within one hour of notifications, a report of work, call and shifts will be for a minimum of eight hours. The foreman identifies which Highway employees are on-call. While on-call, the employees shall be compensated at a rate of $15 per day from November 15th through April 1st. I believe what was happening is that every single one of our people from November 15th through April 1st was automatically being paid $15 a day, every single day. And the idea of this is, is that there's not a need for everyone to be on-call every day. The foreman is the one who's supposed to call in and say who they want when a snowstorm or something is coming in. So you can't, I mean, here you guys are, and I agree with you, is we need to get control of our budget. But to automatically say when, when we're at full staff of seven, um, people, to say from November 15th to April 1st, no matter what, even if it's a beautiful day out, we're gonna be paying $15 a day to everybody? That's what this says. Well, that's what was, that was, that was what you had done.
That would be, that would be if the foreman put everybody on-call.
No, they did.
I think they did.
No, I know, but that's not.
I think they did it to kinda keep in line like what the state was doing when it was implemented, I believe.
Ah, okay.
Well, and that brings me to then, if we're gonna follow what the state does and the state drivers pay 20% of their health insurance.
So that's a different thing.
Different, different. Okay.
But I do not agree that the foreman should also be, because it says including the foreman. The foreman is based on a salary and a salary position. You're on-call.
You can flex your hours and you can do other stuff to do.
No, you don't flex your hours. I mean, that's, well, I'm saying no.
I'm saying that a minimum of eight hours.
Is a lot.
To come in for a, a two-hour inch of snow is, some whores in here read that, um, I think it was, uh, has been three hours.
Has been. Three hours to me is what any state or federal, that if you're called in for something, you get a minimum of three.
A three-hour minimum to me would be.
I think that also follows with the Fire Department, that if the, the, if, um, the volunteers were called in, they would.
Wait, do you guys have a minimum?
We, uh, four.
Four?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll check.
I'll settle at four.
I was gonna say, why don't we try and just standardize them and we'll check across?
Right. So that way, Fire, Police and.
Yeah.
And the Town Garage. But I don't believe including the foreman should be in there, their salary position.
Yeah, same, same thing. Like the, I'm sure that, I know Will, I know Whit doesn't do that, but.
So basically what we're trying to say here though is that a, the foreman designates someone who's, who's a call-in.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that authorized, that provides that person $15 for being on-call for that day.
With a minimum if he gets called in.
If they get called in, okay, then they get a minimum of a four-hour shift.
Correct.
Okay.
Part of the problem here could be if you're not on-call and you make plans to do something and you get a snowstorm out of nowhere, which.
It happens.
It happens all the time, every day, and you start calling people and they're, um, they're three hours away.
That's another reason they did it, was to give people incentive to hang around in case, I mean, you could be having a beautiful day in Rutland and it's snowing a couple of inches up here. So, I mean, seen it happen actually, where guys take off and.
I mean, that, I think that's gonna be, you call the foreman, that's gonna be, his job is balance of what's coming in and what do you have, how many people you want on, like, can you run it with two? And then hope you get someone else and there's just slower response?
I mean, we could take this further. I tried pushing 10 years ago that we worked into, if you have seven, if you, or if you have eight.
Eight what?
Eight, eight employees working and four are on for X amount of hours and four, like, if it's not snowing out, then.
Right, call in, yeah, yeah.
You know, so, but for now, I think that just leave a question mark to come back at another date.
Sure.
Since it's our first round.
Uh, and then we'll, let me just finish out this D part and then we'll be at, uh, 13, about 15 minutes, actually. So D, all employees are expected to be, or does anyone have an issue with that?
Yeah.
Expected to be in attendance during regular work hours. Employees who will be absent from work are expected to notify the supervisor in advance of whatever possible employees who are calling in sick are expected to notify the supervisor as soon as possible, but no later than 9:00 AM. I.
Just to me, the way that it's ordered, the, all employees are expected, and then, so you're gonna have to go back to where I went to, um, that page five, I think it was, D or whatever, not D. That says unless it's with a contract or whatever. Two, was it two D? Yeah, so page two, where a conflict, two C, where a conflict exists between, because I think that's what people read certain things, but they don't read the whole thing.
Right.
So now that's contradicting what we said on two C.
Why don't we, why don't we just cross out all and just say employees?
Yeah, or, or add in, refer to, just so people can read, if they read that one, they can refer back to two C.
What would you put at the end of that? Uh, as in accorded set?
Inflexion, refer to two C. And I think that's a good 10 minutes worth, right?
Good job. Thank you, everyone. Small bites. We'll get there. All right. Uh, paving project, Killington Road.
I'm confused on this. Did this go after bed?
Did, so this is what I'm, are you looking at the one for, uh, Pike?
Yeah.
So, uh, we're, the, the area we're talking about is from the knuckle or where the paving stopped on, like near Anthony Way.
Yeah.
Up to the firehouse. We're talking about on the uphill travel lane.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So just make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, I believe, Dave, before he went out, and, um, one of the last things he did was reach out to Pike to get an estimate of what it would cost to pave that, because there are, what do you call them, ruts, I guess, in the pavement?
It's all the way up through. I mean, it's, I mean, you're gonna stop there, it's just as bad from Schoolhouse Road down to the Pickle Barrel. I mean, it's, it all works.
Since we're moving on here, um, I don't think it's, I, I think we should, I think we should go out to a bid, so the, even if...
I'd actually like to discuss it a little bit more.
Yeah. Why don't we, so why don't we...
I personally think that...
Well, hold on. First of all, we make a motion to accept the, the bid, and then we can discuss it.
I will make a motion not to accept the bid.
Or not to accept, sure.
Because it was not put out for a bid, which you had just explained, it was only one price.
Yeah, I believe it's sole source, which is, we can do. It may not be the best practice, but we can do. Um...
We've never done that.
But can we get, can we get a second before discussion?
Second for what?
To not to accept.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Discussion's open. Go ahead.
Yeah, I actually think, I mean, the route to go would be, try to put some cold patch in there. I mean, try it. We've put it in in the past, and it would stay. There's places up by, you can see the cold patch, like, going from Schoolhouse Road down through...
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean...
Why are we spending 105,000 dollars at this point on this section, when we know we have a rage grant to do the rest of the road?
It makes no sense.
If we can do cold patch for two years or whatever, to get to the bottom of 27 floor, why are we spending 105,000?
I mean, the thing is, maybe reach out, I know Casillas, their stuff seemed to stay a little bit better, the QPC stuff, they don't have it. I reached out to them, and they said they might have some later this fall, but see if someone else has it, you know, if we can get it, and try it.
Cold patch.
It's QPC, but there's, uh, it's the brand, actually. It's just a little bit stickier than the other stuff that they've got.
Right, for, for cold patch.
We've had stuff before that won't actually bind very good, but...
Okay.
You have to put it in right. You can't just throw it in. It's gotta be, the hole has to be clean, and it's gotta be compacted and level and stuff, and I think...
Is that something that we'd be contracting out typically, or is that something we do?
Yeah.
Once we have enough.
Well, once we get more, too, maybe.
Yeah. Okay, so, for, further discussion, minor detail. For further discussion on Pike or any of the paving?
We've always put out for paving for a bid.
Okay. Cool. So the motion on the floor, is any, any comment from the crowd? No. The motion on the floor is to not approve the, the quote from Pike, uh, and go, uh, go a different route. Yeah, for further discussion.
One, I have one question. Is, is Pike already engaged in this? As I notice, the signature says the book prices spent are hereby accepted.
It doesn't really matter. The board is the one of the final...
No, no, I understand that, but...
But if you read it here, it says town to, whatever, it says Rutland, and then it says, and the second reserves the right to withdraw this quote if not accepted within seven days.
Okay.
So, I don't know when. It says 8-1, but it's way past, the bid date was on August 1. So, once again, I'm kinda confused why it's a month and a half later that we're first seeing this. And Kristen only signed it on the 17th, so we're within the...
Okay. All right.
I have a question. Were they, were they giving some sort of, uh, a special rate, because they did East Mountain Road and River Road, and...
I can't tell you. I don't, I don't know.
I would doubt it.
Yeah.
I know in the past, we've reached out to Mike Mullin, just to get, you know, ballpark figures, not to actually have them do it, and then put it out to bid. That, they have done that, actually, in the past.
To me, it's just like, the signature's just...
Yeah, no, I, I know.
It's nothing, it's just...
Okay.
But it's $812 at the time mark, which is about the standard of what we've been getting anyway.
All right. So, we can call the question. Uh, all in favor of not approving this to move forward, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain? All right. Knock that one off.
I didn't realize, number 11, because that's why I said, let's introduce.
Oh. Do you wanna introduce her again?
I like how you introduce yourself.
So, yes, as, as Jim spoiled for everyone, we do have a new finance director, and it's Kirsten Hathaway, and she is gonna give us an update, uh, as, on what she's been doing in town finances.
So, it's been, um, it's been quite a month, um, for my first month here. Um, I've met some of you. I haven't met, I haven't had the pleasure to meet you yet. I know, uh, this is the first time I'm meeting Jim as well. Um, so I'm excited to be on board. Um, I know I've been working directly with the department heads to try and make sure that they, um, are receiving a budget each week on where they are at with, um, any expenses, any, um, revenue that's coming into their specific departments, um, making sure that they're coding their own bills, so that they are aware of what they're spending, um, and trying to make sure that we're all discussing what is going on, um, project-wise, uh, in our different departments. We have a, um, a department head meeting that I've started, um, once a month, so that we can try and keep everybody apprised of anything that might cross into different departments, that might hit more than one department. Um, with regards to, um, finance stuff, um, I know there's probably gonna be more coming. Um, Bill and I have talked a couple of times about, um, some ideas on how to, um, keep you all apprised of what is going on with the finances, but also not overload you at every single meeting. Um, so I wanted to start with my first one, with kinda giving you, um, a high-level view of just where we're at with revenues and expenses for this, at this point. Um, I did pull our, um, tax administration, um, for this fiscal year. Uh, currently, for the first, um, I don't wanna call it a quarter, we're only, we only have three, um, but for the first installment, we have collected 92% of the taxes. Um, for the second, we've also, um, collected, uh, for the second and third installments from, from some of the taxpayers as well. So, the second installment, we're at 14% collected. The third installment, we're at 12% collected. So, overall, we have collected about, uh, 39% of the total taxes, um, for the town, which is, um, great at this point in time. Um, I did pull, um, the revenues, so that I can let you know that we are currently at 130% of our, um, anticipated revenues, um, at this point. Um, we do have, um, 77% of our, um, second quarter local options tax so far, which we still have a couple, um, a few days left in this quarter, so we may get more that comes in. Um, and I can let you know at the next board meeting, hopefully, where we're at with that. Um, with expenses, we have, overall, hit about 21.6% of our total expenses that we've, um, projected for the year. Um, so we're in a very good spot at this moment. Um, the bonded indebtedness, uh, we do have a, um, a bill that's gonna be coming to you soon. It's due November 1, which is going to encapsulate most of what, um, we've, uh, budgeted for what we overbonded indebtedness. Um, so, and it looks like that is usually what happens every year, is it comes November 1 for the majority of it. Um, with that, um, I did wanna let you all know as well, with regards to the TIF, um, Abby and I worked, before she left, on getting a, um, uh, getting funding from SRF 554, uh, for, um, Water 1 through 3A. Um, so we actually were able to, um, pay off the 2024 Community Bank Ban, which we had been, um, hoping to take care of. I know we had to refinance in October if we hadn't been able to pay it off, but it has been paid off. Um, and we have started paying on the 2025 Community Bank Ban with the, um, the remaining funds from that. So, um, I think that was about everything. I did pull together some, um, information about our funding for paving, if anybody wants to hear it. Um, if you don't, that's perfectly fine. Um, I can talk to you offline, too, if you want. Um, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I would just prefer to have all that information on the case of the board prior to...
I can do that, absolutely. I can put that into the, um, into the Select Ward packet the next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think we should coordinate it with the treasurer's report.
Yeah. Do we have any questions for Kirsten from here? Um, anything from the board, or not from the board, from the, from the audience? And again, that any of those directions be directed to the board, not to her directly. All right. Thank you, Kirsten. Yeah. Um, and next up, very, you know, nice transition into a discussion and approval process, reviewing sign warrants. The way we have been doing it, eh, we need to do it better. And Jim pointed out that we can do it, how we have been. Um, I do think for transparency for the board, and it's nice to get in the emails, so you can reference it, and not just go to the, the office and look. But I like getting the AP warrants sent, so you can look at them and not have to go into the office. But again, you had pointed out, not everyone needs to sign it. So, that's my, that's the understanding. Is that correct?
The way that it worked here is that it was myself, at one point.
Yeah.
And then when some citizen had a complaint about conflict of interest that never really existed, I stepped away from signing it, and Chris Carr would sign. So, the bookkeeper, who was reading the checks, treasurer, whatever, would just make a phone call or an email, can you come in tomorrow, and can you sign the warrants? And that person would go in, put 20 minutes aside, and do what you're doing now, anyway, on a computer.
Right.
Getting the warrants, but this way, he's getting in a paper thing, or whatever. The way that this, that the law reads, okay, that the town was doing for a decade, okay, at that point, it was three of us. So, if two of us were, then that would kind of, we were both in there. You can make it that the chair and the vice chair are capable of going in and making a signature. You can make it that, once one is signed, then they can send a check, so the wire transfer is out. Or you can go about it in saying that to be, you know, cautious, or whatever, that both need to sign to, you know, like, you guys set up a time to go in there, or whatever.
Right.
I'm throwing that out as different ways of doing things. One person, or both have to sign.
Um, so, does anyone, I could, do you wanna make a motion, so we can discuss?
I would prefer to see two people.
Okay, so, uh, let's make a motion.
So my motion is to make the chair and the co-chair, okay, to be capable of going in, to sign the warrants on behalf of the board. And the law still states that the other three of us still need to sign.
Right, so they still, the, the rest of us, and this is...
But they would get, they would get sent out to us.
They would get an email, that's good.
So you'd still look at it?
But they are doing it, and they're getting the checks out. We just get it during, what would happen is, is that at the next meeting, the warrants would be here for us to go through, and then the others could sign.
I would like to have the, the chair or co-chair and one other Select Ward member do it. That way, if you're out of town, Bill can do it, and there's, uh, another Select Ward member can do it with it.
So it takes two, select word members, two signatures.
Yeah.
We could do one.
Right.
But we were saying, what specific one? Or if you wanna do it Jay's way, I'll remove my motion, okay, of saying two.
Do we have a second on that?
I don't know.
Pretend we didn't. That's been, I don't think we did.
We did.
So, do you remove others?
Make a motion to have the chair and/or the co-chair...
Along with?
Along with...
One other.
A backup of the other remaining three.
Yeah. So, basically...
The backup would only be if, like...
If you're out of town.
Chair or the vice chair, we're out of town.
My motion is to approve that the chair and the co-chair sign the warrants upon. If one of them is not available, then an alternate from the other three can be there to sign.
Perfect. I think that's good.
All right.
Who's ever available.
Second.
Second. Uh, all in favor?
For signing, that's good.
For signing.
Yeah, okay. Now, I got a question on reviewing.
Sure.
I have, from, yeah, being in this position for a very short period of time, okay, and I'm looking at, I still say, I'm looking at all of these things, and I understand stature, from a statute standpoint, we have responsibility for signing for them, okay? But my presumption is, before any of this stuff ever reaches us, the department head has signed off on it.
Sure.
And it...
Kristen told you that she's calling it, each other, each one of them coded.
No, I know, yeah, yeah.
Each one of them coded.
Right. So, what I'm, my concern about is, in the discussion, is, we seem to be losing, um, the forest for the trees, because I think what we really should be doing in the discussion is, for instance, this warrant is for $59,000. Can the town pay $59,000? Okay, and that would be under the advice of Kristen and the treasurer, okay, that we have $59,000 to pay, okay, the warrant, okay? And then the warrant happens to include all of these other line items.
Right.
Like, last week, I think we brought warrants that were almost a million and a half by the, and we, we, we didn't ask the question, do we have a million and a half dollars to pay this stuff?
I did. I said, I don't know what the revenue, I don't know how much money we have to back.
Right, yeah, we don't know, yeah, right. So, I'm, I'm just wondering if, if we're losing the...
So, so underneath, the, this, the, the reason why this warrant thing is when there wasn't, it was town administrators.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And underneath town administrators, the board were the ones that had to do everything and just instruct it. We're town manager.
We're town manager.
Right.
And that's where I was getting annoyed at, like, no, we're not, for $3,000, I am not responsible.
Right. What, do we wanna, like, set the spend limit of manager that, that can be done without approval?
The, the manager has a budget. The, the finance director has a budget.
Right.
The voters approved a budget to spend. The question is, Bill is bringing up, is he just wants to make sure that, when we have $2 million with the bills out, we're not gonna come in and say, we only have a million dollars in the bank.
Right.
And we're gonna have bank checks. We're gonna have checks bounced.
Right. And that's, that's, that's it, okay. And, yeah, like, and if we ever gone into that situation, where we couldn't cover it, then we had to decide what checks to release. That's a different story.
Right.
Okay, but we're actually talking, yeah.
The story from that is, is that, really, in every vote that we have, is that the town can do a tax anticipation note during the year.
Yeah.
For up to $500,000 or whatever.
Right.
Okay. And you have a bank that you have a good community, community bank.
Great relationship.
You have a great relationship with, and they're there to help cover you.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I would hope when the town gets to that point, whoever's...
Yeah.
But they shouldn't be producing a, a warrant for us if we don't have the money in the bank.
Right.
Somebody would hand a warrant before that.
Cool.
I would hope so.
All right, excellent.
Somebody after, Will, when the check bounced.
When the check bounced.
Definitely know that. All right. So with the, the signed warrants, um, do you, does anyone have any questions on it? Do we have the money? Do we have that? I assume we do. We have the money?
Yeah.
Well, when the chair and the co-chair go in, and I think they could have a question...
We can ask that question.
We'll ask that question.
So they're supposed to be in the office between whatever time to whatever time.
Have we got enough money?
Yeah, have we got enough money?
Yeah. All right. So I'm gonna cross that one out, because we don't need to read around that.
Well, yeah, I was just in the review.
We don't.
I don't think we called it. My motion is for the chair, the co-chair, and if, or one cannot, that...
Someone else.
An alternate that is available should show up.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Abstain? All agreed there. All right, that gets that.
So since we have warrants in front of us tonight, I believe...
Do you have any questions on them?
No, but we have warrants, so I know what YouTube's going to do tomorrow.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna grab them after and sign that. But if you guys would have come by, I'd love to sign right now.
So, this is the one that did not get signed.
Right.
We will sign it. I have two warrants in front of me. We'll do it, since this will be approved at the next meeting, what we just did. I have a warrant in front of me for $59,711.82, okay? I make a motion to, to approve $59,711.82.
That's not this one.
Right.
That's the second one.
So, these are the, so it just kind of jumped ahead. So, these are the, so it just kind of jumped ahead.
Yeah.
We need to approve or sign the ones that did not get signed at the last meeting.
So we don't need to approve, just put those aside right now.
Right.
Put the ones that we approved last week, what, two weeks ago away? We have one here in front of us for 919, I believe, $59,711.82.
Are you looking at golf or tennis?
I'm looking at check warrants for the general fund. It says $59,711.82.
Yes.
I have two warrants in front of me, one for, one for the general fund. It starts off with Vermont Institute of Natural Science.
Yeah.
All right.
This, the, the first one here, I mean, the invoice was from July 16th, so I'd really like to get this one out, it's for the rec department.
Yeah.
So I made a motion to approve signature for $59,711.82 while we're here.
Okay, you're just doing while we're here, I'm like, we just talked about it.
Can we get a second?
Yeah, can we get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor to approve that one, say aye.
Aye. Okay, for the golf course account, make a motion to approve a warrant for $2,912.97.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right, moving forward, we're doing what we just approved.
Yeah, so we're just doing these, so in the future, we're not going to go through this process?
No.
Okay, that was my understanding.
But since it was already on the agenda.
Might as well.
We did.
Okay. And then Bill, you and I will sign these.
I never got the other ones at all, I think there's two others or one other.
Um, they only require ones.
Okay.
You guys over by the office, feel free to also sign.
You really should keep it to the two that do it. Because they still should be brought here, that was the motion, Patrick.
So, okay, so that's the.
Don't want the five people going here, because then it wouldn't be coming here, because then it would say everything's signed.
So we're still going to have these, just, but only go over if we have questions?
You're going to have them coming here. What would happen is, is that Chris would go in and sign.
Yeah.
And then the manager would bring the pamphlets here, okay? And we just sign, so we get a second or a third or a fourth or a fifth.
Oh, well then I'm going to pass these ones around then.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. You can sign those.
Once you sign and Bill signs.
Then they can release the checks.
They can release the checks.
Okay.
And then they come here, but we're not going to put it on the agenda.
To slow down the checks. We're just going to say, hey, you know, part of managers report, sign these please.
The pamphlets will come in here and we'll just sign them.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
Mark would come in and say, hey, you guys haven't signed, I don't have the majority of the board signing, whatever.
Ah, yeah, okay. Cool.
So I have something else I'm going to need citizens to put on the second list.
Sure. Let's finish these up and make sure we have all, still not signing them though.
Not until the next meeting.
Okay.
Once you guys all actually say that you understand, we're not responding. For $3,000 a year to be thrown.
Right. And that's not one of these copies, right? It's just happened to be highlighted, okay?
They're mine.
Okay.
They're my two copies.
I highlighted them.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, citizens, comments and concerns?
I have one.
Did you want to start off again?
Yeah.
Sure. Citizen Jim Half, you recognized.
Yeah.
You have the floor.
Town employee. Name is Jim Half, zoning administrator at this point that I'm sitting here as, as we all know that my hours have been moved from 40 hours to 25 hours. I'm not going to get into that any further. But required Cobra notices and deadlines, it is not my job to get the package to me for Cobra. It is a federal law that the town, the employee, here's the required notices and deadlines. Forty-four days, if you have your own company doing it, I need to have a notification to me of Cobra, okay? That it's available to me. If you do it inside, it's 14 days, and then there's another 30 days, no, if, if you have a third party, which this town has a third-party Cobra thing, they should be notified in 14 days of the, of the change of any employee. And then that company has 30 days to send a notification out to me.
I'm going to pause for a sec, is this personnel?
No, it's not.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is for moving the town forward, okay? So, any employee upon a determination, or an incident, or a firing, or a lowering their hours, should be given within 44 days, notification of everything for Cobra. What is available? What is the cost? What are the rules? I'll leave this with you as the chair, okay? I am past the 44 days. Just to give you an idea, which I will not do, it's $110 per person fine from the federal government that could open up audits and everything else. I just want what is due to me, and I want the Cobra plan from the third party given to me, and I want to be able to sign my family up for Cobra, all right?
Okay. I have a question for you.
Also, even.
Go ahead. I know that reached out, that someone reached out to you saying, do you want the Cobra information? Have you, have you started the process? I'm just wondering if we've started it.
Once again, what I'm saying is, and I'm not picking on, okay?
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, have we started the process?
I was just told the other day, if you want to, and I was told in an email that you have until the end of this month for the 60 days. I'm telling you, that's not how it works. Follow the federal guidelines. We have a third-party provider. You just started, I'm not really, okay? I was, this was done to me back in July, you, you weren't here.
So Jim, since you're a citizen, just address the board then.
Right, okay, was not here.
Yeah.
I should have been told, someone in the office should have told the third-party Cobra provider that my hours were changed within 14 days.
Okay.
And then they had 30 days to send me notification of my rights.
Okay.
Not an email from someone from town.
I understand, so what I'm trying, so I can follow up on it for you as zoning administrator Half, has, has, have you received anything as the process started at all?
No.
To your knowledge?
No.
Okay, and you are interested in that? In Cobra?
Of course.
Okay, so I will make sure that the right places are contacted so that you get the appropriate information.
I have copies of my checks, which I don't understand, and I'll make another copy for you, but it just finds it to be funny that my payroll for August 25th, insurance premium, the town deducted $44.34, my 3% from my check.
Again, this, this is, this you need to go, we need to do internally with personnel and the things, this is.
I find it funny that people can come, other citizens that can come in and start.
Yeah, but you're a town employee also, and we don't have any information on your paycheck, but we will make sure that if you bring it up through the appropriate channels, we will address it.
Okay.
Because, yeah, if it's wrong, we need to fix it.
And why every other payroll, VEMRs is being taken off that the town is paying.
Again, if you have any questions, we'll handle those through the correct channels, because we have no information to help you with that.
So what is the correct channels as of now?
Right now? If you have issues with that, can you bring it to the director of finance?
I will.
The concerns, and then she'll work with internal systems and the rest of the board, well, myself, if I, you know, if there's anything that needs to be signed, then we'll bring it up through the correct channels. But it may be as easy as we cut you a check for this stuff.
To be honest with you, if my family loses health insurance, they'll go to the problems.
Okay. No, you can speak to him after, to make sure that he gets the right information.
Absolutely.
Any other citizens, comments, concerns? I'm going to start on this side, actually, let me start with them. Online, is there any citizen comments and concerns? All right, hearing none, going to go into the room, and I'm going to start this way this time.
Jordan Grant.
Jordan Grant.
You guys have been talking hours, breaks, this, that, the other thing.
Sure.
I've mentioned it before, and maybe you can look into it, I was really close, to have time clocks would be like a really good idea in those offices.
Okay.
And maybe like to the highway to bond or whatever, it's just a suggestion.
Yep. Thank you for that. All right, coming across the room, Lyle? Hey, you're still here.
Sorry. Department of Forest and Parks has issued a statewide burn ban, I don't know if that's something, I love that sign out there that says 30 miles an hour, but I don't know if you can change that to burn ban in effect or something.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. We, we're trying to link up with WIT today to get that swapped over. We, it, it doesn't actually come into effect until the 25th, but, but as of this time, I'm not allowing anybody to burn.
For everyone else, Mark Fiore, who is our fire marshal.
I'm the, the fire warden for the town of Killington.
Yeah, so Mark Fiore is a fire warden. If you are burning, please call him.
Yeah, and if anybody sees anybody burning, whether it's an open campfire or anything like that, please don't hesitate to call me or the fire department, there's always someone on duty. And as far as I know, Gifford Woods has not received anything as far as a burn ban. We're still looking into that. We also have the, the mountain bike event this weekend, or towards the end of this week, which we will be going up there and checking and making sure nobody has anything, no open burning. Killington has posted, the fire chief told me today, Killington has posted on their sign up there that there is no open burning allowed, so. But that means now. Yeah, we also have, I'm not sure if you, you know, you guys may have seen them in passing, but there's several federal forest fire crews around town and in town, from Iowa to Wisconsin, they're all at like a level two out of four, so they have people deployed just in case, and they are, are patrolling certain areas of the forest and stuff like that too.
So hope for fireworks tomorrow?
Typically the fireworks go through the town, as far as permitting, you have to get a permit, and then it goes to the fire chief and it's supposed to go to the fire warden, so I would say as of right now, I, I personally wouldn't sign up on any type of fireworks or anything like that.
Person needs a permit from the city of Vermont Division of Fire Safety, and unless you're a licensed fireworks, like you're, they have their own.
All right, we're going to come, coming across the room?
I just want to speak.
Say your name again.
I'm sorry, Rob Kowalski. Jim Half seems to know this very, very well, but Jim, I'm not clear on it, all right? So, the Belgium, I'm going to call them Belgium blocks, that are at the base of the access road, the status. So have we said to, is it Markowski?
All right.
Have we said to them, we want you to honor the contract, and that means if you have to dig them out and put in whatever it was, five inches of some kind of base, have they agreed to do that? They have not.
No, it's not anybody did.
So, here's the question, this goes all the way back to two months ago. So should we have maybe then, and even for sure now, gotten our legal guidance so that we're not, they're not running out the clock on us with the winter season coming, where they're going to say, well, we can't do any work in the winter? I'm trying to understand, how did it just shift with no responsibility on their part to feel the need to get it done?
So we withheld $70,000 for payment back a year ago. This issue came up a year ago, not as some people say, two years ago, it was only put in last year, okay? $70,000 was held from them to finish the job correctly. The email that came out of VHB, our engineering firm, that I received last week from Rosie O'Brien, that was overseeing the job, said that the 18th and the 19th, that such subcontractor would be there removing bricks that are either sunken or raised or decaying, whatever, okay? So all I saw them doing on the 18th and the 19th is picking through certain sections. That's not acceptable.
Mm-mm.
What's acceptable is, is that they need to go through, and we heard Abby say that at most, at anywhere, the highest was one inch of the polymer sand. It's not acceptable to be picking blocks.
The whole thing needs to be five inches.
Because next year, the five, the whole thing needs to be five inches, and we need to make sure that the company that we hire on has that engineer person inspection, watching the job while it's being done and making sure it's five inches of polymer sand. We had the discussion of putting grass down, because it was going to cost us every five years to spray some sealant over, it's way cheaper than grass. So, there's no wire that needs to be held here, we need to talk to VHB and tell VHB, this is what was in the contract, and this is half-assed.
Yep.
We're, we're not doing separate sections, we're doing the whole thing. So they got to start on it two days. But that might mess them up when they pull something else out, because we were told five inches is going to mess up certain things.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Andrew, get them. I did request to see drawings from Abby.
Yeah.
Before she left, I have them on my phone. You look at the drawings from the engineers, and they specifically say granite cobbled pavers with half-inch slash three-quarter inches max joints. But I believe everybody who worked there, they can see the joint space is three, maybe four inches.
All right, thank you for that. Yeah. All right, any coming across and say, have you had before?
Yes, I own property at 62 Schoolhouse Road.
Can you say your name one more time?
Mark Dinges.
Thank you, Mark.
And, thank you, you're doing a great job running this meeting the way you are under circumstances, I appreciate that. Six months ago, I reached out to Green Mountain Power, there is a dead elm tree within 10 feet of the roadway, and it's a dangerous situation. Over 15 phone calls to them, they finally sent somebody out three months later to take a look at it, confirmed it's dead, they said it's not their problem, it's not going to affect their power lines. And then called Vidal, they say they don't do anything about this. I spoke to Kevin the foreman of probably six weeks ago, agreed with me, it's on the easement of the town, the tree is dead. I'm going to reach out to Dave. Unfortunately, what happens to Dave, and Dave did speak to me several times on the phone, he says he knows people at Green Mountain, maybe get them out there, because the town employees cannot handle this tree. It's in a dangerous location with the power lines and things like that. So, I don't know where to turn now, I'm, you know, worried with the school buses coming through and all the cars in the morning and afternoon, it could be a, a problem in a little time.
I make a motion for the town board, it's booked the select board to move forward with getting a quote from an outside service to take the tree down.
Sure. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All in favor, or any discussion?
Not if we're going to get it done, I said you got to.
Quote, book.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I don't want to put up this counter.
Yeah, well, let's get a quote, but.
All right, so there is a motion overflow?
One thing I will say that we used to do, actually, we'd go around checking the roads, if there were trees that were in question, we'd mark them down and we'd get a bunch of them together, and we'd call tree contractor and have them take care of them, actually, yeah, instead of just like one, I mean.
Right.
Because you could probably pick any road in town and find some that are in question.
Yeah.
And I think that's been done for quite a few years, actually, so.
So do you want to, for this one, right, you have a.
Yeah, we'll do this one, and then while, while we're doing that, have the foreman drive
around and see if they can identify any, hit them with a can.
Yeah, write them down.
I'll throw my motion. Take a second. Make a motion for the town foreman to move forward, so you follow the rules that were these, 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 but specifically take a look at the body in front of, Schoolhouse Road.
And I think there's another one that really needs to be looked at on Courier Road that's hanging out, or I've seen it hit the UPS truck, it goes by several times, so it's a big one.
So what we're instructing the town foreman to do is to take a look at this tree and determine how to.
Inventory the trees that need to come down in his mind, and then go out to a bid, and come back to the board with the bid.
Yeah, because a lot of them need, like, dead trees and stuff, the road crew can't do that, you need a bucket truck, so otherwise someone will get hurt or killed.
Okay.
We got the $6,000 bid.
No, I, no, I know. Well, okay, but would the, would the, would the road crew though, take some trees down?
Yeah, if it's something, if there's something they could take down, absolutely, yeah, if it's standing and alive and not going to get in the wires, they should be able to take it down, yeah.
So what we want is, we want the foreman to drive around and take an inventory of trees that need to be taken down, and decide which trees the road crew could take down, and which trees need to be contracted out to a contractor.
So do a tree survey?
Right.
Yeah.
And then go ahead and get those quotes.
And get those quotes.
Yeah, because they can do that in the winter time, even stuff. Yeah, because they can do that in the wintertime, you and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
So my motion is for the foreman to move forward for trees that they cannot take down.
Right.
To inventory, and get a bid, and come back to the board.
All right, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Second. Any, so any further discussion on that? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And let the road foreman know.
Yeah.
That it is also any trees that they can take down.
Take down those trees.